Okay, everyone, the time I have is 7:32. I will call this Yarley Borough Council meeting to order. Please join me in saying the Pledge of Allegiance to our flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. And before we continue with the meeting, I would like all of us to observe a brief moment of silence for George Floyd, Breonna Taylor, Ahmaud Arbery, and all those others whose names we don't know, but we are mourning at this time. All right, thank you. Let's continue with our roll call.
Ms. Thompson?
Present.
Ms. Segal-Morris?
Present.
Mr. Ross?
Here.
Mr. Brea?
Here.
Mr. McCann?
Here.
Mr. Berry?
Present.
And Mr. Finer?
Present.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. With seven council members in attendance, that is a quorum. Moving on to community announcements, I have nothing specific to share at this time, but as always, if any member of council or resident would like to share something, please take this time to do so. And just a simple review for some of our protocol here before we move forward. For our residents on the call, if you would like to be acknowledged, please utilize the raise hand feature in Zoom. That can be found by clicking on the Participants button at the bottom of your screen. If you are in the app, if you have dialed in on your phone, you'll do that by hitting star nine. Any announcements for the good at this time? All right, hearing and seeing none, we will move on to public comment. So this will be the portion of the meeting where members of the public who wish to address council may do so on items that do not appear on our agenda. Now, if you wish to comment on an item which does appear on the agenda, you will be given the opportunity to do so at that point during the meeting. Before speaking your comment, you are required to state your name and address for the record. So again, with that raise hand feature, if anyone would like to make public comment, now is the time. All right, I see John waving his hand. So John, go for it.
Thank you. I don't know if, I've never done this participant thing before, so I don't know if I find you or not, but anyway, thank you for recognizing me. I actually had a question for our Chief of Police, if he's present tonight.
I'm here, sir.
Oh, hi. Good. Thank you for being there. We all have been seeing what's been going on all around the country, the disorder in the cities. And it's a horrendous thing. The original incident was between a very limited number of people, and it has spread to the whole country in a very, I would think irrational way. First Amendment protest is one thing, but then when the hour of curfew comes, anybody who's still hanging around is not giving an orderly protest, they become troublemakers. So the thing I want to ask you is, what can we do in Yarley if such a thing comes close? What is the, can you explain the stand your castle doctrine or stand your ground? I don't know where we stand as, say, lay citizens when it comes to how far we can go defending our neighborhoods and our town.
I can't give you, I can't offer legal advice. I'm not qualified to do that, which to describe the castle doctrine in great detail would require. I can tell you, we have no credible intelligence to believe that any neighborhood in Yarley at present is under any threat of civil disturbance. I can assure you that we're working with, I'm personally working with my counterparts throughout the county and throughout the region in preparation for if an event ever did occur here unlikely. And that our mutual aid agreements are solid and that we have procedures and methods in place to get help. So I want to assure you that since Saturday, we've increased patrols. There's additional patrols on each and every night till the wee hours of the morning, protecting every home and every business in Yarley. And we're going to continue to do that for as long as it becomes necessary. But to explain the castle doctrine, that would be, that would be beyond my expertise. That would require an attorney to help you out with that. I think you know one, right?
Well, I see one on the council every time. Yeah, we know plenty of lawyers. We don't necessarily know lawyers that are very well versed in self-defense and those, it gets a little arcane, you know, and a little, people become sort of very emotional about it all. And it's a, it's a big step to, if you're forced to defend your, your family, especially if it comes to violence. You know, none of us are skull crushers or violent people, and we've all lived our lives pretty much in the opposite of that. The closest I ever came to that was when I spent six years in the Army, joined the Vietnam War, but thank God I never was shooting and had somebody shooting back at me, so I'm.
I would just say, you know, that I want to acknowledge that Chief Kelly has been in constant communication with Public Safety Committee as well as the mayor, giving us updates. As he mentioned, there are increased patrols, you know, so I want to assure everyone that, you know, our police department is doing what they need to do and doing it quite well. As always, if anyone feels that they are injured, they should call 911. You know, beyond that, I don't think this is the appropriate forum to have that sort of a discussion. But I do just want to assure everyone that, you know, our police department is monitoring what is going on very carefully.
All right, yeah, I'm not expecting any trouble, but I just thought I would ask. But thank you for entertaining the question, Chief.
You got it, sir.
Yes, sir.
Okay, do we have any, let me pull up the participants so I can see any additional public comments this evening. Again, use that hand raise feature where if you're having trouble going like this, we'll work too. All right, I'm not seeing any right now. So with that, we will move on to consideration of today's consent agenda. Would any member of council like for either item A, B, or C to be considered separately this evening? All right, hearing a request, is there a motion to adopt tonight's consent agenda?
Some moved.
Second.
Right, motion is made by Councilperson Thompson, seconded by Councilperson Segal-Morris for the adoption of the consent agenda dated for today, June 2nd. Are there any discussions from council? All right, discussion from public, and Tim Wheeler, I saw your hand go up. Is that in relation to this, or did you have a public comment?
I just actually wanted to see, I jumped on without really knowing what the agenda, you know, what the agenda was, the A, B, and C. So I'm not really sure.
Oh, gotcha. So I, I can just go over that too. I realize maybe not everyone has an agenda for them. The consent agenda this evening, it just includes approval of the minutes from the last meeting. It includes the bill's list dated for today, and there is one certificate of appropriateness, which is for a sense at 104 South Main Street.
Okay, thank you very much. I apologize.
Yep, not to worry. All right, seeing no further comment, I will call the question. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Are there any opposed? Any abstentions? Hearing none, the motion carries seven to zero. We will move on. Chief Kelly for a police report.
I have two items tonight, sir. The first is monthly statistics for May of 2020. In May, we handled 536 calls for service. We issued two parking tickets. We issued 52 traffic citations. Most of those traffic citations were for excessive speed along Main Street. We issued one non-traffic citation for a criminal matter. We investigated eight accidents and made two arrests, neither of which were for DUI. And the second item is, I just wanted to, and we kind of alluded to it in response to a question earlier, but assure everyone in the borough that we have extra patrols out each and every night. We've increased our manpower substantially. We're patrolling the residential streets. We're patrolling the business. We're doing that with our cruise lights on, so you'll see the red and blue light steady on. We're doing that to create deterrence and to ensure safety of everyone in the borough. So that will continue. That will continue well through the weekend, and then we'll reevaluate on Monday as to our staffing levels. That's my report, sir.
Great, thank you, Chief. Do any members of council have a question for Chief Kelly? All right, thank you. We will move on then to the engineers' report.
Hello, can everyone hear me? Awesome. All righty. So the first update that we have is in regards to the North Main sidewalk phase two. So we reached out to PennDOT to check in about the existing HOP that we had. And because that was considered to still be in active construction since we were not able to go all the way out to Cold Springs, there had not been an option to extend it further. And it is now technically expired. And so to be able to go out to Cold Springs or out to the easement, we do have to go through a brand-new HOP process. As everyone knows, we were already awarded $125,000 from the DCED MTF grant. And that grant is open again, and again, does not have a match for municipalities. It was originally supposed to be due at the end of July, and they've given an extension because of COVID, and that is now due until the end of September. Additionally, we are going to move forward with finally closing out Phase One, which means the borough will be getting the $30,000 back that was being held. And then we are still waiting to hear about the PA Sewer and Small Water Grant, and that won't happen until September, but that is additional funding that could potentially go towards the sidewalk project. So at this point in time, RVE recommends that the borough decide to move forward with at least the preliminary engineering work, which includes the survey and the design. And they need to decide if they want to do that only up for Cold Springs or all the way up to the easement. For Cold Springs, we have to redo survey because the survey we used prior from a previous engineer is outside of PennDOT's timeframes for eligible survey. But it is, again, only up to Cold Spring. It was partially designed, but we have to adjust it for the sidewalk buffer and then adjust the handicap ramps that would be at the Cold Springs intersection. So the estimate from the design team of timing to finish up the survey work and get through the design to submit the HOP is two months for only up to Cold Springs and then three months to get all the way up to the easement.
Can I have a question?
Sure.
Is the, I didn't want to interrupt you, but for the design, since you're on that, if we extended the HOP, whether it's to Cold Springs or to the easement, I know this was a huge issue with the current, the HOP that's expiring, but would it be in the 30-foot right-of-way with curbing and everything else that goes with 30-foot right-of-way? Or would you still plan to design into the 50-foot right-of-way as the current one that's expiring does?
No, I think we'd be adjusting it to be the 30-foot right-of-way.
Okay, that's all. Thanks.
Yeah, I think it's actually 33-foot right-of-way right now.
33-foot, sorry.
But yeah, so in regards to the cost differences, so we provided estimates for both of these options when we went through the PA Sewer and Small Water Grant back in 2019. And the project cost estimate for just to Cold Springs, when you add in the additional work needed to get through the survey work and the HOP process, would come to $465,836.95. And then if we were to go all the way out to the easement, the total would be And those estimates include the survey work, the engineering, and the construction and the inspection.
What was the second one again? Could you please repeat it? Almost double, about double?
A little less. And that's mostly because, you know, some of Cold Springs was previously designed, just has a little bit of adjustments. Cold Springs to the easement, we have never touched it, and we don't have any existing survey work. Whereas up to Cold Springs, we are not starting from scratch. We just have to verify the existing survey work that was already done.
Liz, quick question. You had mentioned at Cold Springs, they would have to make it a handicap accessible?
Yes, yeah. This is a PennDOT road. We are required to do handicap ramps at all intersections.
But you would not be able to add a crosswalk there, but they would, for a handicapped person to cross and enter that. Is that right?
Why would there not be a crosswalk at Cold Springs?
We were told that it had, I mean, if you have a handicap accessible ramp there, it would make sense that you would have to have some access for that person to cross and enter the sidewalk. It was just confusing that PennDOT would require that, but not allow, without a survey, a crosswalk at least. But that's not your issue.
Well, are there, yeah, I thought there were crosswalks planned.
There were. We, and we were going to put one at Cold Springs. We applied for the Yarley grant, and we weren't awarded it. I don't think there was anything said about not being able to put one there. The only thing that I was aware of with a restriction to crosswalk was right at Wayfaring. We were not allowed to do that as part of the Phase One because we weren't going the rest of the way, and we weren't going to have the ramp. So it was going to be unsafe, and we hadn't done enough survey work to make sure there was the correct amount of site distance for safety.
We were just told that basically because the traffic study didn't support the need for a crosswalk. But not enough to cross there was the.
The last traffic study that I was aware that occurred was to do mid-block crossways, which we definitely did not have the traffic to do mid-block crossways. But you can do a crosswalk at any full-blown intersection. The borough can do that. You don't need their permission. They have to prove it, but you can do it.
Okay. And is that, is that the, is that currently what the, or I mean, is that what's on the plan as you know of it, to have a crosswalk at every intersection? You're talking about the east side, right?
Yes, but.
On the west side, it doesn't matter. It's about, that's what, that's what you call a mid-block crossing? Like, for example, Jervue doesn't connect to anything, so.
Yes. Mid-block can refer to intersections like Jervue, or it can be just not at a full-stop intersection. Like, there was, I'm trying to remember what the other areas were in the original study that was done not too long ago, but one was in, around the station, the train station, and they said that there was not enough, that it needed to go to the end of the block.
So where are the, where are the crosswalks planned to be if you're going the whole way, do you know?
No, that has not been determined yet. Beyond Cold Springs, no.
And I ask it because from the perspective of more as a traffic slowdown aid, as a visual deterrent, as speeding. Because I know that there, yes, there are some, living in the neighborhood, I know there are some people across the street, and it's helpful, but it's also helpful to everyone in terms of slowing traffic down. So, and it's not, it's not very expensive, so that's, if you get on the same page of where those crosswalks would be. But I do have some other questions for you. One is in the estimates that you provided, could you, do you have it broken down? How much is engineering and how much is construction?
Yes, yeah. So the engineering for Cold Springs, so that would be the engineering as well as the inspection. That is about $80,000. And then for out to the easement, it's about $120,000.
So, and the engineering, is that up to Cold Spring, is that taking into account all the engineering that was already done?
Yes.
So that, so what is the, kind of what are the biggest pieces that were not done that add up to? Like, when I'm looking at it, this was done already. It's $80,000. The part that wasn't done is $120,000. Why is the part that was done so close in price to the part that wasn't done?
Gotcha. Tom, do you have a direct answer for that?
Well, it has to do with the overall, up to Cold Springs, we need to go out and verify the survey. Beyond Cold Springs up to the easement area, that has to be completely surveyed, all sides of the street. Again, it's a heavily traveled road, so it's not something that you can do quickly. It also includes construction inspection, right?
Yes, yep.
Right, so, you know, that's an estimate of what construction costs will be. And, you know, it's just the number, we gave you a breakdown in the cost, and that's just the way it broke down. I'd be happy to go over with you in more detail if you need to.
Yeah, okay, we could do that separately.
Yeah, if you'd like, we could do it like a sit-down at a Public Works meeting and stuff and go over the numbers and show you what it is we need to do completely. A lot of it has to do with the requirements of the HOP, but it also, there's a, there's a good portion of that, that's the construction inspection part, which, well, it depends on how good a contractor you get. A lot of times, we don't use all that money. It's just an estimate on the inspection part. We can nail down pretty closely what the design costs are going to be, but inspection, it's, you know, we're dealing with low bidder, so you got to deal with whatever contract you end up getting, so.
So where those?
That leads me to my second, I'm sorry, Caroline, go ahead.
I was just going to ask if those quotes were furnished to council. I don't think I received them, and I would be interested to see them.
They're no different than the ones that were sent previously, but I, for instance.
I have those.
Earlier today.
Okay, thanks.
Okay. And so that leads me to the second question, which is that, you know, obviously, I was on council. I remember the long process we went through to get the first HOP. Obviously, we want to avoid the expense, the hassle, the time. What is the best way to proceed to minimize that? Is it to do it in two sections or to do it in one section, or, I mean?
So I think it would be best to go through all the design and get the HOP all the way out to the easement. And when we go to bid it out, we bid it out as alternatives, so that we get the price breakdown for just to Cold Springs or all the way out to the easement, and then we have those separate values. And then depending on how much grant money we get in and how much that we have in the sidewalk fund, we can decide how we go through the construction process. But right now, with the MTF grant, we definitely have enough to get all the way through the preliminary engineering work, and you can just have it sitting there. And then we'll just have to be on the ball with that new HOP and continue to extend it out until we have the funds to get all the way out to the easement. I spoke with the HOP coordinator, Gus, last week and, you know, talked to him about how he thought the process was going to go since it had been so difficult prior. And the one thing that he said is, right now, they are being way more efficient with getting through this right now because everybody's working from home, and these people aren't splitting their time between being out in the field right now. And additionally, one of our issues that I have learned through digging through the past of these is that originally, we were given out to one of their consulting firms to be reviewed. We were not actually reviewed by a PennDOT person. So we will make the request that we do not get farmed out this time and that we stay directly with PennDOT, and hopefully that can, will also minimize the headache involved in this. And Gus definitely said to make sure that when we go through this, to make sure that we say that it's Phase Two and refer to the first project that it's kind of already been what it is, and everybody seems to have the desire to see it, to go all the way through, for sure. They are, when I spoke to the grant coordinator earlier today in regards to what we needed to do in Phase One to get the $30,000 back, he definitely recommended that even though we were not selected the last two times that we applied for the MTF grant through PennDOT, that now that the first phase would be officially closed out, and we wouldn't be like blinking as pending, that if we have something that is shovel-ready, as in all of the design is done and good to go, we would be a very good candidate for the PennDOT MTF grant in the next opening, which would be usually they open up in the summer, so it would be next summer that it opens.
Just for, if I'm calculating correctly, for council, if we wanted to build out to Cold Spring but design all the way to the easement, we'd be looking at something just shy of $500,000.
That sounds about right, yes.
Okay. Any additional questions from council members on this? And Liz, do you need action from us tonight?
No, no, I don't think that I do. We don't have anything pending. Like I said, the next grant opportunity isn't due till the end of September. If we want to take advantage of PennDOT moving through their permits quickly, I would suggest moving sooner than, than later, so that we can get busy on that design work and get that submitted to them to get the permit. That's kind of what's going to dictate our timeline, is getting that HOP permit. And at this point in time, we haven't touched the design aspect, so, yeah, getting the survey crew out there, like, we got to schedule all those things because we really can't move forward with design until we have surveys. It's a domino effect in all of that.
All right. How long would a new HOP all the way to the easement, how long does that last until it expires?
So they're good for a year, and then you can keep extending it. So the old HOP, we extended it twice, and then we're in active construction. And the portal no longer had the option to extend it, and then we finished out what we could with the money that we had. So it kind of sat there. So when I spoke to Gus, he said, you know, technically, that HOP is active out to Cold Springs, but because the design that is approved is no longer accurate because it doesn't include the change in buffer, and it's not open to go through a re-review process. So the estimate that we have is, it would take us about to get to the point of being able to resubmit to PennDOT and get that HOP.
Okay, and this isn't a question. It's just my concern. My concern is getting an HOP and then not getting the money for it, which is the position we've been in for the past couple of years.
Which is why we would have to be on the ball about extending it. Like, at this point in time, with the MTF grant and some of that sidewalk fund, and the money that's going to be coming back from the Maine and Afton reimbursement, that's $212,000 that is coming back. If that's allowed to be used for the sidewalk stuff, I think you guys are going to be able to get through at least to the Cold Springs with this time.
Oh, that's good to know.
All right, understand anything else on this, on this topic? All right, thank you. Real quick, before we move on, Caroline brought to my attention earlier that Jim Kane was waving his hand. Jim, did you have a question?
Yeah, I'm sorry. I just didn't, I didn't get the, the agenda either. I just wanted to know at what point we would be discussing, you know, potential exceptions to outdoor dining in the, in the borough over the next few weeks until we get to green.
All right, so that's under our discussion items. That's towards. All right, so that's, uh, under our discussion items, that's towards the end of the meeting, so we have a few more project updates to get through, uh, council reports are pretty quick. So unfortunately, I can't give you too good a time estimate because we do have a few other items, but you've got some time.
No problem, I just wanted to make sure I didn't miss it, and then the other question was, is there a time on the agenda to talk about the protest scheduled for Thursday evening, and then I also heard there might be a protest scheduled for Sunday. I just wanted to understand if there was any intelligence about that. Uh, I kind of plan on being there to protect my businesses, but I just wanted to know if, if there was any thought from the police about what those, um, what the plans were for businesses, and if it's now, it's not the right time, we can talk about it later, okay?
Yeah, let's circle back on that one, and, you know, to be, we kind of found out about it today, so we are still planning on our end as well, but we can, I'll open for an additional public comment at the end for any follow up.
That, that sounds fine, thank you.
Yep, okay, uh, all right, so Liz, back to you.
I, I think that that's it for the updates, the rest of what's going on is in the projects.
All right.
All right, so moving on to projects. Main and afted intersection, um, we submitted all the reimbursement paperwork last week, and so within the next two months, the borough should be receiving back, uh, two hundred and twelve hundred thousand dollars. So that's good news. But then in regards to what is left, uh, for the expense of that, the original contract with the contractor, it was for two hundred and fifty-six thousand, four hundred and thirty dollars. At this point in time, there has been two hundred and six hundred thousand, three hundred and fifty-one and now we have utilized all of the grants, so that means that there's about fifty thousand dollars that the borough needs to make sure they budget for, for the rest of the main and afted work.
Any questions there?
Good.
All right, yeah, if no one has anything, then we can move on to the next.
Okay, um, then Mary Yardley Bridge, uh, we finally got an updated quote, uh, back from Gator Bridge that included the epoxy coating that we all just added upon at last meeting. Um, and so now the current full estimate that we have, which includes, um, the remaining design work that we've already begun, the construction as well as the inspection is two hundred and fifty-two thousand, nine hundred and sixty-two dollars. Uh, and then when it comes to timeline, um, I'm going to give you my best guess if all goes well. We are hoping to have the, uh, get through preliminary and final design to be complete by the end of June. And once we have that, we can submit for the general permit through D E P. However, I'm going to submit the pre-application form by the end of this week. At that point, they will let us know more about what we can expect in regards to the timeline to get that general permit. And when we submit for the general permit, we will concurrently submit with the conservation district to get our erosion sediment control permit. And those are the only two other permits that we should need to be able to move forward, um, with the project. Uh, and then once we have our permits, it will take about a month to prepare out the bid package, and then about another month for the advertising and awarding, so with that timeline, we're hoping that by September we would be good to go with construction for Mary Yardley. All assuming that we guarantee the funding for the construction aspect.
Yes, that is the trick, isn't it?
Yes.
All right, so I'll turn it over to council first, do any members have questions, concerns on the Mary Yardley Bridge project?
Yeah, go ahead.
Let's, yeah, let's go John and Ryan.
Just a quick question, can you speak to the cost of, of the bridge a little more? Because, you know, originally it was going to be considerably lower for that bridge type and what, we were kind of estimating maybe about fifty thousand lower, it seemed like when we were talking about this committee and what you initially had sent us, can you speak to that a little bit?
Um, sure, and I'm also having trouble hearing you. The, I don't believe the estimate changed too significantly from the last time we submitted something to you guys, and that, that number includes the cost of the bridge itself, the freight, the installation of it.
We have a quote from May twenty nineteen for a bridge that includes an A D A ramp and A D A landings that came in with engineering at two thirty-nine.
Okay.
Branded, the bridge was quoted twenty thousand lower, but we don't, we're not getting anything A D A here.
That also included about ten thousand to touch up the easement, I believe. There was an extra ten thousand, yeah.
Uh, well, actually, so the new quote includes fifteen hundred soil and sediment erosion, but the original quote included ten thousand in that line.
Can I ask a question about the, I'm looking at the actual, uh, invoice or not the, the estimate? What is mobilization?
Uh, mobilization is just the cost to get all the equipment out there, and that, that's definitely a conservative fee, especially since now that we're going with the aluminum option, the crane will be a little bit less expensive than initially, um, anticipated.
So this is all going to be subject to the bid, the mobilization, the
Oh, yeah.
Thirty-five thousand dollars, the clearing of the site, twelve thousand dollars. Some of these costs seem, I mean, I'm not an expert by any means, but they seem a little high, that's why I'm wondering.
They're, they're, they're definitely conservative, the, this is a, you know, for a budget kind of a quote, cost estimate. The idea is that whatever we give you as a cost estimate, there's no chance that when the construction bids come in that they be above it. So this is like the upper limit of what we would expect it to be.
Does that, does that apply to the sidewalk as well? Because, uh, years ago, when the entire sidewalk was estimated to cost in the two hundred thousand dollar range, it ended up being over a million. Very comforted to know if that's, if that's a policy now that you're basically, we're not going to have to, uh, be surprised by numbers being higher than what they're estimated.
That is what we generally try to do now, I can't speak for that original estimate back in the day.
I'll, I'll address that one, you already, we, we did at the time, we thought we had a good estimate. One thing that we underestimated was traffic control. That became a very, very big, uh, number on Main Street because we talked with Lower Make, and we were trying to, uh, do a detour, and basically Lower Make, we had to go all through Lower Make to do that detour, and Lower Make declined to allow you to do it, so, that meant we had to close one whole lane when we did all the work along the sidewalk. It turned out to be a lot more expensive than we thought because of the traffic control that was required, which is Penn dot control, which meant flaggers and all kinds of, you know, shutting down one whole lane, so. Should we had known about it, um, I just think we underestimated that portion of it. Obviously, we try not to make those type of mistakes, but, you know, we, we probably underestimated because of that in North Main Street. Can I answer your question?
Yeah, I, I think, um, I mean, I think that that was part of it, uh, I think there are also other things as well, but I, I understand what you're saying. The main, the main idea is that, uh, you're essentially saying that we can feel confident that these are, it's very unlikely these numbers would be exceeded. And that's helpful.
Can I jump back to a question that already raised? So mobilization involves the crane, but then installation is a separate line item, so between the two, it's fifty-five thousand. So is it thirty-five thousand for the crane to pick it up and twenty thousand for the crane to put it down, what, what does that mean?
I mean, mobilization also goes to the rest of their equipment, it's usually a lump sum blanket number that the contractor assesses to, um, get all the different types of equipment and the materials and all of that. It's getting the work up and started.
Okay.
Usually includes their bonds or insurances that are included in the initial part where they have to pay upfront when they do the performance bonds. So includes them going out and getting that, so it's something that's an upfront cost that the contractor looks to recoup fairly quickly, we do limit the amount of mobilization based on the size of the contract that they're allowed to charge. So we, we limit that to a reasonable amount, that's just been an industry standard for, for a long time, so.
Previously, I believe the cost was way higher because the, uh, power station was there, which is not, which limited access, if I recall correctly. Has this been adjusted down since, you know, to account for the fact that a crane can drive right in now?
Well, the power lines are still there, not all of them, but some of the power lines are still there.
Oh, so that's the limit, the power lines, not the?
Yeah, there, there was more power lines there because of the station, but there is still power lines that have to be worked around, so there is that.
But it was, it was all doable to do it anyway, but it's, it's obviously much easier to do it now that the substation's not there.
May I ask a question?
Go ahead.
So does the two hundred and fifty-two thousand, essentially two fifty-three, include the engineering cost to date?
Yes, oh, and well, no, that, um, that excludes what we have already charged, but we've charged for the, um, the survey work and the borrowings, that, that's it.
Okay, so the total cost of this project will be approximately what? Including the engineering to date?
So the engineering cost is, the total is forty-six thousand, and we have about thirty thousand left to get through.
That was included in your phone, total number, Liz, right?
The, the total number that we provided earlier today just took into account the remaining left on the engineering stuff. We did not include what we had already, what has already been expensed.
And that's the total project cost that you gave them today. Includes all engineering?
Yes.
So forth, all right.
So the total project cost, including work done to date and work to be done?
Yes.
Is two hundred and fifty-three thousand dollars?
Yes.
Yes? Okay. Um, for comparison, can anyone tell me how much the bridge cost that goes from Yardley Walk to the St. Andrews property?
I don't know the cost of that off the top of my head.
I thought it was high one hundreds, but I, that's an old email, we got a long time ago.
The one thing you have to take into account there also is that that bridge was constructed by a private developer, and it was not public bid. When you do public bidding, unfortunately, all the labor is prevailing wage rates, which a developer usually doesn't pay, so, it adds twenty, twenty to twenty-five percent to the cost of a project for labor.
And you mentioned that you are going to, um, get your D E P permit and you're going to the conservation district. Are the final plans for the bridge going to go to D C N R?
Yes, they will, yeah, they'll be submitted to them for sure, they have to give their approval, but we don't get a permit from them.
Okay. And then lastly, um, certainly a private fundraising effort's going to take place project, I think it's very, very important to have a very clear, understandable cost estimate. So that if this cost needs to be defended, people who are asking for the contributions have the information on hand, because it's, it's a big, big number for what appears to be a small bridge, so the people asking for money will have to be well prepared to answer questions.
Right, and that's certainly something we can handle through the committee or council can do some interpreting, uh, and advertising.
Can I clarify what that donation lift will be, is that going to be like a hundred and forty thousand dollars? And we expect that to be raised, or do we expect a lesser amount in funds to be, uh, raised somewhere else?
I spoke a little bit with one of the committee members about this, this week, I mean, it's a tough time to fundraise. Also optically, it's, it's not great to ask people for money for a bridge right now, so I think we need to be more conservative in our, our expectations for fundraising, which does mean that Yardley Borough will have to do more of the financial lifting here.
Okay.
Um, well, we already agreed on seventy thousand that the borough's paying. And then there's, you know, the grant for forty, so I don't really know is the borough in any sort of position to, you know, cover another, so on, a hundred thousand dollars for this project?
All right, that's, that is the big question, and we are going to talk about finances a little later in this meeting. But, you know, certainly with the number we're looking at with the bridge, with the sidewalk ongoing, we're looking at what these numbers are versus what we were originally hoping, council's gonna have to make some tough decisions coming now. And again, we're gonna get to a little bit more of that later, so maybe we can save that big question for them. But if there are any more technical course specific questions on the project itself, we can continue with that now.
I had a quick question about the, um, the steps, because my understanding that was going to sit more flush
Yes.
with the surface, and I see the cost for four thousand, what are the steps gonna be? How many steps are needed, and then on the flip side, what is the material these steps are going to be crafted out of?
The material hasn't been determined yet for the steps, and we're hoping to minimize, that was, that definitely was just like a, just in case we still need them. When we, uh, they're just starting to work on the grading plan now that we have finalized the choice of the aluminum bridge. So when we line up where the bottom of the bridge is, then we'll be able to figure out the new grading plan, and when we get through that, then we'll know how many steps we may potentially need. But I instructed the design team to minimize the steps and to get rid of them if we can, especially on the, um, the tow path side.
Elizabeth?
Yes.
How did you come up with the cost estimate? If you don't know what materials you're using for the steps, you also don't know what material you're using for the deck?
Um, no, the, the deck, um, should be, uh, composite. But the, the design team did the cost assessment, I did not personally put it together, so I'm at a loss with some of the detailed answers to your questions, but I can certainly circle back with them and get answers to all of your questions.
Because that, that material can be a significant part of the budget, you can go make.
Right, and, and as we said, this estimate was meant to be the, the high limit. It's definitely meant to be conservative, we very much expect to come in below it, but this is the, the high estimate that we came up with when we haven't finished design work yet, we're still in the middle of doing design work, but there was a request to have this updated for this meeting so that the borough can work on figuring out how they're going to fund it.
Hey, ask a question?
It's John Salantano.
Hi, John.
John, real quick, Tom, were you going to chime in on, on that answer?
Yeah, the only thing I was going to say is, with, with these, with a bridge across the canal, across any stream, you generally, you do not change the opening underneath the bridge.
Yeah.
Though it might be a little slightly lower profile just because of the depth of the members, but I, I wouldn't, I wouldn't hedge to, to tell you that it's going to be a dramatic difference between the height of that bridge and the amount of steps that you'll be needing on both sides, we won't know that till the designs further along. We should have a preliminary design probably in about two weeks, and at that point, we can, we can share that with you and kind of go over it soon as we get that.
Yeah, but, but actually, but what you're saying is not, uh, I don't, I don't know how many of us agree with what you just said, that you don't change it because that's how it is, is what I heard you just say, but no, we want it to be as low as possible, because
I know you want it to be as low as possible, but we have restrictions from D C N R and from D E P that we can't improve more in the waterway.
That's, that's okay, but if the reason is because it's, that's how it is, so you don't change it, then that's not okay.
Okay, I, I misspoke. Okay, I, I misspoke. It's because of permitting purposes that you don't end up, you don't change.
The opening.
You don't wanna change the flood characteristics of, of the structure. So, and causing backwater if you make it lower. If you, if you restrict that opening, you could cause a backwater kind of condition. So generally, you end up, your lowest member of the existing bridge would be the lowest member of the new bridge. Now, the new bridge is probably gonna be lower profile than the existing bridge. So you may, you may save, save a step or two, but it's not gonna be, it's not gonna be flush at the ends.
Alright, so now we'll go to John's question.
Yeah, so I keep hearing this word conservative. I don't really know what that means. I, I generally work in a world where you have an expected number and a range around it, because we're gonna need to be, you know, making a decision on borough finances and fundraising requirements. What is the expected number? And what is the range above and below that? What are the primary drivers of difference? Another question I have is, I heard Mr. Beach say that with a public bid, we have to pay prevailing wage, which could be 20% on labor. Perhaps that's why this thing keeps escalating. How much of this is actually labor? And what is that? What are we talking about 20% of? So what is? It is primarily due to labor. I'm assuming the public bid doesn't cause the materials to go up in price. I assume it doesn't cause the engineering to go up in price. What is that 20% being applied to? Those are my questions.
You wanna answer Liz? You want me to do it?
Go ahead, Tom.
Okay. On this type of project, in all some, the labor will be in constructing, whatever we have to do to construct the adequate foundations, which is in design, so we don't have.
I know what the labor is. I'm asking you, how much money is the labor? Make the.
How much, we didn't break it down in the labor and materials, I mean.
I don't understand, Tom, why you said what you said. Because either it's true or it's nonsense.
So I think it was just a general statement that we were outlining was that versus, because we are using benchmarks. I know that in these discussions, we've talked about project costs along the canal that were maybe not handled by municipality. So I, I think Tom was just getting at sort of a, a blanket statement as to why we might be a little bit higher here. I know we've talked about prevailing wage in detail before. You know, I don't know if we, we have a baseline number. What would this cost if it were private?
No, what I'm asking, I'm asking how, you know, if we've done an estimate,
conservative estimate, you know what the cost of the bridge is, you know what the cost of the engineering is, you know what the crane rental is, all those kinds of things. What is the cost of the labor?
Labor is, doing the foundation work.
I know what you do with the labor. I'm not asking that. I'm asking you, in the estimate, how much money have you set aside for labor?
I don't have that breakdown with me, John. I could get it for you. I don't have it right now.
It'd be great if the fundraising team had access to the information that people are gonna ask questions about, because if.
I will provide that information to Paula and I'm sure she'll get to you, John.
So I think what would be helpful here is, is.
Every time we talk about this bridge's price.
John, I've got the floor now, okay? I, I think what would be helpful is that if we could get from the fundraising committee, specific line items that you're gonna want broken out, so that we can make sure we have all of that information available before fundraising starts.
It's very simple. Cost of the bridge, cost of engineering, cost of related materials, and cost of contractors.
Well, the way most of the line items are, the materials and the labor for each step associated with the construction are together, so it's a little difficult to pull out the labor associated with each individual step from the cost of materials. We can do that, but that's not the way that most estimates are built initially.
The construction. I'm not gonna, let's not waste our time. What, what is the range? What is the expected number that we're gonna spend and what's the range around it?
I, I didn't hear all that, John. Say it again.
I heard that this was a very conservative number. It's the absolute most that we would ever spend. I'm asking you, what is the expected number? If this is the most conservative number, what is the expected number? And what's the range about, around that expectation and the primary drivers of that range? So we can make sure that we have costs that are reasonable.
Okay. I'll, I'll give you that. The expected cost, if you take out the contingency costs that are in here, and you want to remove the engineering cost and you want to remove the construction management, you want just.
What's the expected cost of the whole project? What is the expected cost of the entire project? And what are the, the drivers of variance? And what is the maximum and minimum?
Okay.
Amazing. So what you're asking for a likely cost, what we can hope that the bids will come back as, you know, if this is a high number.
We generally try to do our costs, so they were 10, 10% minimum 13% low. I mean, excuse me, we, the bid should come in 10 to 15% lower is what we anticipate. So we put contingencies on there just because, say, you know, you don't have a lot of competition. Sometimes you get contractors, they put a lot of profit into things. So our estimates are generally 10 to 15% above what we would expect to see the number.
Okay, but you already know the cost of your engineering. You already know the cost of your.
Right, so you could take those numbers off. We're talking just strictly construction.
Yeah, John, those are reported below the line as actual estimates on our estimate received.
Yeah, I haven't seen, I don't know if you sent that out to the borough or just to, to council. I didn't see that.
It was provided to borough staff and some council members.
Okay, so Liz, just, the question's very simple. What do you believe the bridge is going to cost? If you believe the maximum the bridge is gonna cost is 253,000, what do you believe the actual cost will be?
215.
So you're saying it's actually going to be 253, and that's also the maximum?
215.
215.
215 is the actual.
Yes. If we're able to not have to pay the sales tax on the bridge itself, which sometimes municipalities can get that discount, that would lower the cost of the bridge. If mobilization is minimized, if we don't have to do as much site grading, we definitely padded that because we weren't sure what was gonna be needed with the fact that we're still in preliminary design. Yeah.
And when will you actually know what it costs?
We should be finished with design work and preliminary design work in two weeks, and we should be able to update the estimate at that point in time when we actually have. Because at this point in time, we don't even know what the overall disturbance is going to be. Nothing has been chosen yet. We were just given the go ahead to move forward with the aluminum option.
Right, so to clarify once again, the borough asked for a number for this meeting, knowing that the design work was not complete. So there are some question marks in this number that will move around because of that. And also, we're not gonna know the final cost of it until it gets sent out to bid, because the bid could be extremely low or the bid can be extremely high, but there's just so many variables of what contractor bids on it and what kind of day it is when they're writing the, the quote for us.
What kind of competition we end up getting, so. I mean, the bridge cost is, is kind of set, but the contractor to, to set the bridge, do the foundation work, the grading, and so forth. And it's gonna come down to how much competition they have and how good bids we get from that.
Caroline, were you chiming in?
Yeah.
From a fundraising perspective, this is a question you've been asking for a long, long time. When will we know what our fundraising target is?
And we told you from the beginning, until we get through design work, it is hard to give you that.
I'm asking for a date.
End of June.
End of June.
Caroline?
Yeah, I just wanted to say respectfully that I'm extremely unhappy with this quote. I think it's bloated beyond the realm of conservative. I too would like to see those ranges with each line item. I also think it's really difficult as someone who doesn't work in the construction realm or engineering realm, when every time we receive a quote, the nomenclature on every line item is different. So when I'm trying to go back and compare how much costs have gone up, I can't do that, because this has 15 line items, and the last one we received had eight line items, so things are becoming more and more confusing. So I would just request more clarity on those lines, so we know what we're paying for in each line, and also as John requested, a range, so we can fundraise and we can budget as a municipality. Funds are tight this year, so the sooner we know that, the better.
And that's not a problem, and, and in the future, maybe it might be best to, to do these, have these kind of conversations at one of the committee meetings prior to this meeting, so we don't tie everybody's up and like.
Yep.
But, yeah, we're happy to break down the cost further for you.
Alright. Fair points. Any final questions on the Mary Arley Bridge? Alright, hearing none there, we will go on to whatever is next. My agenda's not in front of me. Pico property.
Yeah, the last one is the Pico property. At this point in time, Paula has reached out, and we are supposed to be having a meeting with them to discuss moving forward with the purchase of the property and what their asking prices. And Paula, was the appraisal sent to Pico yet?
No, I did not send it to. We're still trying to get everybody who wants to join us on that. It's supposed to be sometime next week. We meet with them. So whoever wants to join in from council, let me know, please, and your availability next week.
And Paula and I will coordinate that to make sure that we don't have any sunshine issues if we get too many requests.
Okay, that's it. That concludes my report.
Alright, thank you. So moving on, Paula, it's back to you for a manager's report.
I am gonna keep mine short. Besides my report that I already sent you today, I just want to point out, under Public Works Number Three, our Public Works contractor really would like to get line painting done on Main Street and Buttonwood Park and on Afton Avenue. And I'm asking to get an approval to go forth and get this done while our traffic is still on the lighter side. He anticipates it costing no more than $2,100. I looked at our budget. This could be paid out of street improvement fund, and our street improvement fund balance is currently just over $91,000, so I wanted to ask council for the approval to get these lines painted on Main Street and Afton and Buttonwood Park.
Alright, would any member of council like to make a motion on that at this time?
So moved.
We have a motion. Is there a second? Second. Alright, so the motion is made by Councilperson Thompson, seconded by Councilperson Ross to approve up to $2,100 for line repainting and outlined by the borough manager. Questions or comments from council?
Are, are any of these lines including crosswalks?
Um, I don't think it was. It was mostly just the line, the parking lines.
Okay, I just wanna make.
But I'll double check that.
For future, any, any crosswalk work, I think we should just discuss, I don't know if you remember, but some years back, when, when John Boil was a manager, we discussed using the laminate material that it lasts a lot longer than the paint.
Oh, absolutely.
To look a better deal. It's a little more expensive, but it lasts like three times or four times as long, so.
Right, and I think that's what we're looking into doing at the intersection once it's all done.
Okay, sounds good. Thanks.
Okay, then I just have one more item, and it is.
We gotta vote first.
Oh, I'm sorry.
You're good, you're good. But before we do that, any other final questions, comments, council or the public on that?
I have one question, Dave.
Yep, go ahead.
Does this painting include the yellow striping on the curb to prevent parking along the edges?
This was mostly just the line painting. I will ask him about any of the yellow curbs.
Especially in front of the borough, followed by, by the Wawa would be nice.
Okay. We'll look at it.
Thank you.
Alright, any final questions or comments? Flipping through to make sure I don't miss any. Seeing none, I'll call a question. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Are there any opposed? Any extensions? Hearing none, the motion carries, seven to zero. Alright, continue.
Our post office lease that you guys voted on a while ago to go forth with, when I was sending in the paperwork to get it moving, I noticed there was a little spot on there for a commission fee, so I questioned the fee, because they want us to pay it. It's $3,100. They did have some pushback saying, and they upped our amount that we would receive from the post office for rent in order, if we agree to pay that fee. Bucky, if you can chime in. I don't know if I'm explaining it right. So I just wanted to make sure everybody was okay with paying that fee. No, I'm sorry, it wasn't 3,100. It was $3,525 in order to move forward and get this new lease.
Yeah, Paula, they actually gave an alternative. They agreed, they offered to do away with the payment of the commission, but the rent would be lowered in that situation. If the borough agreed to pay the commission, they agreed to pay a higher rent. And I did the math. It actually would be to the borough's benefit to accept paying the commission and accepting the higher rent payment. The net differential would be about $2,700 to the borough's favor as opposed to accepting a lower rent payment and reducing the commission to zero. So, you know, I think due to, you know, Paula's catching that, which was a great catch, you know, this counter offer will actually benefit the borough to that extent. So I, you know, just, just based on the numbers, I guess, obviously, there's an upfront payment, then you would receive it back over time through the higher rent payments. But it seems like it's for the benefit of the borough to accept that offer.
Okay, understood. So more of the story here is we will pay the commission, but we will also receive more in rent, which is a better deal for us. So I guess we are, like, should we do a vote on this since we're sort of altering?
Yes, we, this was approved, I think, at one of the April meetings, but we should probably have another vote just approving this counter offer.
Okay, excellent. So then this wasn't everybody's agenda packet. The numbers, if you need them specifically, should be there. But is there then a motion from council to accept the counter offer from the postal service?
So moved.
Here a second? Second. Sorry, I didn't catch you seconded. Was that you, Matt? It was. Alright, motion was made by Councilperson McCann, seconded by Councilperson Ross to accept the counter offer for the rental space for the post office. Do we have any additional comments or questions from council? Any other questions, comments from the public? Right, and seeing none, I'll call a question. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Aye. Are there any opposed? Any extensions? Hearing none, the motion carries, seven to zero.
And that's the end of my report.
Alright, thank you. Moving on then to solicitor's report. Mr. Klosser.
I don't have anything specific from my report at this point.
Excellent, thank you. You might be our favorite tonight. Next up, Mr. Harding, mayor's report.
I'll make mine very quick also. I just wanted to confirm for the public that, you know, echoing Chief Kelly's statements and also yours, David, that we are in constant communication multiple times a day and have full confidence that Chief Kelly has control of, you know, the current situation and future situations, but we'll continue to keep in contact with everyone and of course, update the public at any time that we seem necessary. So that's it.
Alright, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Next up are individual council member reports. So at this time, members of council have an update for many of their committees or other business which they are engaged with. Now would be the time. We'll start with Mr. Barry.
For the Reading Ave Committee, we're just not sure if there is a potential grant opportunity. If there is, they can look at it and give a recommendation, because we weren't sure if that was gonna still be applied to the Pico lot. Other than that, we need to research other grant opportunities, or if council wants to, us to look into it, we can research partnerships, which we had started to do a couple of years ago. So we're figuring out what to do and how to fund future activities. And that's it.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Ross.
I think we discussed everything in the engineers' report for Public Works. There's a lot of other stuff that we need to hash out that we're going to be doing a little later in the meeting for cost estimates and things and how we're going to handle that. So we'll discuss that then.
All right, thank you. Ms. Segal-Morris.
For public safety, nothing other to report other than what Chief and the mayor have already gone over. We did receive correspondence, which we discussed at the public safety meeting from a young resident of the borough, which President Bria said he would respond to. And that is it.
Thank you. And, you know, just to summarize, that correspondence was regarding the possibility of an ordinance that would deal with face coverings in public. You know, more or less, this is sort of something that's covered by the governor's executive order and something I'm thinking we're not going to pursue at this time. But if anyone has other thoughts on that, we can follow up outside the meeting. From myself, I have no updates on the sewer authority, so we'll go over to Ms. Thompson.
No report beyond my discussion points.
Thank you, Mr. McCann.
Yeah, community economic development met tonight. We talked about revising the floodplain ordinance. We talked about FEMA and PMA's recommendations. And we also discussed having a planning commission look at it one more time, make recommendations. And then we're also going to follow up on a couple of issues in our discussion. And then the second point is, we want to revitalize the business enhancement team of the Community Economic Development Committee, kind of provide outreach to the businesses of the barrel and make sure that, you know, they feel heard, that we could support them better as barrel council. So that's something that initiative, I reached out to Jeff Buehler, who had started it under a previous borough council. And I'll be following up, looking to make that a staple of the Community Economic Development Committee. So that's it. Thank you.
All right, thank you. And finally, Mr. Finer.
Nothing to report.
Okay, that concludes our council member reports. We will move to our discussion items, all of which belong to Councilwoman Thompson tonight. Take it away.
Sure, I respectfully ask to move up the outdoor dining yellow phase discussion to the first slot for our business owners and residents who are on the call. Would anyone on council mind if I just share the packet items so that everyone on the call can read it? I think it's helpful.
Not at all. It's a good idea.
Oh, I can't because I'm not a host.
I will make you a co-host and then you will be able to. Actually, I'm just kidding. Paula, you need to make her a co-host and then she will be able to-
So while that's happening, we kind of got to jump on talking about this because Ann Heasley from Parks and Recreation sent us the idea of closing down some of our streets to allow the eateries to expand their outdoor dining space, to allow for social distancing. And then we got the announcement from Governor Wolf that eateries would be, will be allowed to reopen this weekend. So we've broken, we've broken our eateries into, can everyone see this?
Yes.
Okay, great. Three categories, those that already have outdoor eating space, though it may need to be expanded. Those that do not have enough outdoor eating space, or they would like to use their parking lots. And then those who don't have a private parking lot that belongs to them. So we are proposing for a discussion that we loosen our enforcement of our parking restrictions so that parking lots can be used by eateries that own their lots for outdoor, outdoor eating. And also that we consider closing down the Buttonwood Plaza, which is the alley between Firehouse Cycles and the Spa on Main for use by Yardly Eateries from Thursday through Sunday each week, with the exception of Saturday morning, when the pavilion would be needed by the Yardly Farmers Market. The only caveat would be that we would not provide tables and chairs. The perhaps YBA and Experience Yardly and the businesses would have to work amongst themselves to find those tables and chairs and set up and tear down. So I won't go into much more detail. There's a lot on the screen, but I would like to open it up for discussion from both council and the community.
I have a quick question about the borough-owned space. So would we be sort of mapping out which areas of the space eateries can use or other businesses? Or would you set up your table, you got that spot? And you can expect that spot for the next two, three weeks?
For the borough-owned properties, so Buttonwood Plaza, that alleyway, as well as the pavilion, we had envisioned it to be shared table space. So I'm not sure how that would work with waitstaff, but it likely would be more in use by eateries that have takeout service. And then the restaurant goers can take their food to those tables and eat it. But that's another point that's open for discussion.
Sorry, I think probably with, you know, what the restrictions are coming from the governor, that wouldn't be somewhere where we'd be able to have, you know, actual wait service on the tables. But it would allow people to come to the borough, get their takeout, take it there. You know, eat it, enjoy the town. It's nice weather this time of year. It's imperfect, but it is something.
We would use police barricades, though, to barricade off areas similar to Music on Main.
And so if a company, if a business sets up a table, then their customers go to that table and they, I assume, would know that. And then the business would clean up the table?
Potentially. They would have to, we were hopeful that they would work that out amongst themselves and community with one another. But that's what this discussion is for.
That's my only concern, that there might be disputes over table space, who goes where, and they won't clean up after themselves.
If I may, I, I'm from Red House. It would have to be more of municipal, if it's a municipal property, it's got to be more a municipal lot. Yeah, well, we can all, as business owners, say, we'll keep an eye on it and make sure that it's clean. But in order, I'm not going out there at six o'clock in the morning just so that Jim Kane can run, you know, I can beat Jim who's getting up at 5:30, or Stu from Vince's who's getting up at four. You know, we're not going to try to drop tables down there. It would be more a picnic and open forum. But yeah, we can make sure that we can clean up. But that's got to be something that the municipality has to say, hey, yes, outdoor dining is here. Some of the guys have designated spots. You can't get, you can't get waitstaff to run out there. You know, you're not going to get somebody from Yardly in who's going to be sitting there. You know what I mean?
Agreed. And I think that was, you know, that's, and again, this is all very much in the idea phase right now. But I think that's how we envisioned this, that this would not be somewhere where there's active waitstaff. You know, we were sort of just thinking about, you know, what the challenges are and what we could offer as a partial solution. And what we can offer is space. Exactly how that space is used and shared is, I guess, what we're talking about tonight. But we can offer space.
And I think it should be offered as community space first, before anybody stakes a claim to it. I'm not just saying that, you know, I would almost want Vince's to have it because it's right there. You know, it's municipal, it's a municipal lot. Should be, it should be said by the borough and by the community, hey, this is the spot. You want to drop a picnic blanket, drop a picnic blanket. You want to bring your own table, sit with a small table. I don't know. But I, you know, to lay it on the, to lay it on the surrounding businesses, I think is a little bit tough.
So might I propose that we take a step back and perhaps address the easiest one of these three? And that would be those businesses that do have private lots and that we could grant an exception to our parking ordinance during this yellow phase. So those are listed as Continental Tavern, Vault, Pretty Bird, Cowitore, Burritos, and Red House. Does anyone on council have any issues with that proposal? It has been discussed with code enforcement officer and police chief.
How long do you expect the, this to be lifted? Do you have a timeframe or will it be touch and go?
I mean, we expect yellow phase to come rather quickly after, or green phase to come rather quickly after yellow phase. But we do have to keep in mind that many people will be uncomfortable eating inside a building for some time. So we might want to consider extending this for a longer period, even into green for those, for those restaurant goers who aren't yet comfortable eating inside a building. So I don't know. We are initially requesting the lifting the ordinance or enforcement of the ordinance for one month. And then we can reassess on a monthly basis.
Right, and again, to be clear there, even when we go to green, there will still be some, likely some capacity restrictions on, you know, how many patrons can be inside a restaurant at a given time. So even when we go to green, we may still be doing this. You know, but the idea we had here was essentially, we're not going to change the ordinance, but we can relax enforcement of it while we work through this. And Wes, I see your hand is up, so if you want to chime in next.
Yeah, yes, Mr. President, thank you. I wanted to point out that in the green phase, restaurants are limited to 50% capacity. So we may want to carry this on for a little while. We don't have an idea right now how long green will last.
And my second question, are these lists exhaustive? Like, this is the list under each category, or are they just a sample?
As far as I know, I got everyone. Please raise your hand if I missed you. I'm very sorry, but I did, I did try to get everyone.
Okay.
All eateries, anyway.
Okay, they can reach out.
So-
Jim Kane has his hand up.
Yeah, first of all, I'd just like to say thank you to council for being proactive and thinking of creative ways for us to, you know, continue with our businesses, you know, given the limitations and restrictions that we have, you know, hats off to you guys. There are some just inherent challenges with what you're suggesting about using that parking lot across from Vault. I think what, I think if I'm visualizing what you're hoping to do is, if you go to a hotel, I'm sorry, if you go to an airport and there's a whole bunch of eateries around there, there's a big space in the middle where people get their food and then they go to the area and they eat. And then they put their trash away. I'm kind of getting the sense that that was the vision that you may have had for it. Not that we would have, you know, servers going out there, taking someone's order, running food out to them and then handing them a bill at the end. I think it was really meant, if I'm understanding what you want, is for people to purchase food at a business and then go to a communal area and eat it, to kind of create a sense of community outside eating and all of that. I think that would be very interesting, you know, especially if you're doing it in the area where we had Music on Main. Just some logistical challenges about who, you know, who's responsible for cleaning up. And I don't think it's any business that's assigned to table. I just think wherever you bought your food, you just go down there and sit. And hopefully, the community puts it in trash receptacles and we find a way to get people to, you know, to empty the trash at regular intervals. I would, you know, I don't think that my business supports it, but I would be responsible. I'd take the responsibility for emptying the trash. I'd have my team go out there, put the trash cans in and empty the trash. And if that was the case, I don't see any need for my business at all. But if I can help the community and offer support for it, I certainly would. My, my personal request, and I was, Wes and I had a conversation earlier this week and he said to bring it out at council, is we'd just like to put three floors in front of our building to expand the seating. When we went to six feet between extended seats at each table, we really reduced the amount of seating we have on our deck. So in order to get six more people seated, we've, we've put three two-top tables in the front of our building. And we've separated it from the sidewalk with planters. I haven't done that to be, to be non-compliant. I did it in such a way that you could see what it is that we're anticipating. So people can walk by, they're not six feet away. And it creates a nice kind of, kind of French cafe sort of environment on the sidewalk there. But that's the only exception that we're looking for at this point. Putting a tent in our back parking lot, I just don't think that's sustainable long term. And I'm not really sure that customers want to sit in the parking lot and eat outside. And in order to make that attractive by putting trees and shrubbery, it would just be a significant investment for what likely to be a relatively short period of time. So those are just some of my thoughts.
Understood, thanks. Then Caroline, sorry, I jumped over you there.
No, it's okay. I was just wondering if anyone has any sense of if we're going to allow tables on, on the sidewalk, which I think Yardly General and a few others had already been doing pre-COVID. How much of a clearance, ground rules do we want to set to leave as open space on the sidewalk? That would be my only point.
Caroline, in speaking with Jeff over the business enhancement team, he had discussed with me also a suggestion that in Jersey, a lot of towns are allowing eateries to kind of spread out on sidewalks, like 50 feet within the business, kind of have a partnership with the other businesses, make sure it's okay to kind of spread out and have outdoor seating that may go further along than their own business. So it's just a thought, kind of to build on what Mr. Kane had said.
Okay, so I guess what I'll do is I'll make a motion then to, for this first point, and then we'll move on to the open area. Unless, are there any other businesses that fall? Sorry, this also includes Yardly, Yardly Inn, Trattoria, Rosa Bianca, Charcoal, and Canal Street Grill would also fall into this category of businesses with private lots.
Caroline, this is Frank Lyons. I would like to chime in one second if I could.
Go for it.
Yeah, I want to back up what Jim said. We really do appreciate Yardly Borough being proactive on this because I'm telling you right now, the businesses are not just suffering, they're hemorrhaging. And I don't speak just as the owner of the Continental Tavern. I speak as the chairman of the Board of Visit Bucks County. We just completed a survey today, and a lot of restaurants in Bucks County are going to actually close. And the longer the yellow and the green phase extends, the more restaurants we're going to see close. And the more, that means the more businesses that are, that go under, taxes aren't paid, and people are not employed. And so I think it's critical to give these, the businesses in Yardly, the hospitality restaurant businesses, some relief. It isn't really enough. I mean, even under the green, where we're only allowed 50% capacity, it's hardly sustainable, but it may keep businesses alive long enough until they can get back to normal. So any relief you can give us, we really do appreciate. And we do appreciate, I, speaking for the proprietors of the tavern, I really appreciate you guys getting out in front of this and being proactive because it's necessary. Not all, not many, not all municipalities are doing it. So thank you very much.
Yes, thank you.
I just want to add one, one thing, just generally that I think, well, I'm not going to speak for others, but I think the general gist here, personally, I hear you Frank and James. And I think that anything that we can do, so it's all temporary. This is a kind of experimental situation. So anything we can do to help support the businesses in Yardly, which adds so much life and are such an integral part of our community, you know, I'm on board with. And the sidewalk thing, I think we should, I don't know if we're taking that up now or, but, you know, I'd like to just hear from, you know, just make sure it's not a safety issue. As long as we can make a clear separation, I would say, you know, let's, let's try everything we can to support the businesses. And if it becomes a problem, then, you know, we can adjust.
Do you happen to know, Jim, how, I saw your tables today on the sidewalk. They look great. Do you happen to know how far from the bushes to the curb you have clearance there? That we could use that as a model?
Yeah, it's consistent with what Glenn had at the general store. So it's on the same, on the same grid. So if you, if you're okay with people walking by the sidewalk in front of Glenn's store with the two tables out in front, our shrubbery that we're using to create a barrier between the diners in the front and the people walking by, it's, it's, it's very easily to walk by. And if you go across the street and up Main Street, it's, the distance is consistent with what some of the more narrow sidewalks are, so.
Would you say five feet, four feet? Would you say five feet, four feet?
I'm sorry, I just, yeah, maybe four or five feet. I just honestly don't know. But my guess is if you guys walk by, you'd be like, oh wow, this is pretty cool.
I walked by it today, Jimmy. It was probably about six feet from the, from the curb to the planters. Be six feet.
But we just had a couple of our wait staff just sitting there and they, they kind of thought this was going to be really cool. And, and it just made me think that, hey, this is, this is a, this could be a positive. You know, as out of all of this craziness, this could be a positive that we've got some, you know, some cool, you know, French cafe sort of feel in Yardley. So I, I kind of got excited about it, even though it's only three tables, it would help.
Okay. So I would like to make a motion then to loosen enforcement of our ordinance on parking so that eateries can use their outdoor parking lots for tents and outdoor dining. And also to allow eateries to use sidewalk space, leaving a buffer of approximately five to six feet so that pedestrians can safely pass for outdoor dining.
Second.
Right. So we have a motion from councilperson Thompson, seconded by councilperson Finer to relax some of our ordinance restrictions. Any further discuss, I know we've been talking about it already, but do we have any further discussion from council members of the mayor on that specific motion?
Just to my earlier question, should we put a time limit on it to re, readdress it?
Sorry, yes, I will amend my motion to, in, to be from beginning of yellow phase, which is June 5th and through the 4th of July weekends. So, or let's just make it to our next council meeting, which would be July 7th.
Second.
Right. So we've, yeah, we've got a friendly amendment to keep it in place through the first meeting in July. Alright, so any, first of all, any members of council object to the amendment? Okay, no, that is good. So we can now continue our discussion of this. And I saw Jim.
Yeah, I'm sorry. I just want to understand what our obligation is. Do I need to come back and solicit again in, in, in four weeks to keep some three tables out in front of the restaurant? Or is something going to happen between now and July 5th that would change the circuit? In other words, is it a month? And if everything goes fine, we can keep, we can keep going until we're able to seat our restaurant at 100%? Or is this every month, we're going to keep revisiting it? I'm just curious, so I know whether to mark my calendar to come back again.
We, our intention to set the time limit is just in case there's any issues, safety issues or code enforcement issues, as long as everything's going smoothly. I think that it, council is of the mind to continue to support our businesses.
Okay. And just one more important question. Tom has three generals behind him. I can see Reed and I can see Grant. I just have no idea who the guy in the middle is and it's driving me crazy. I'm guessing it's Lincoln. Tom, can you clear this up for me? Oh, he's gone. I'm never going to find out.
We'll never know.
I'm looking pretty unmute.
Oh, here he is. Who is it?
Actually, my wife really liked the frames. She stuck them in my office. There's, it's General Lee and Stonewall Jackson. So I've got Grant and Abe Lincoln on the other side of my.
Oh, that's Stonewall over your left shoulder. Okay. All right. Thank you.
All right. We got a little history lesson in there. All right. We do have a motion on the table though. So any final.
I think Pete is raising his hand.
Okay. Yeah, I can't see everyone at once, but Pete, go ahead.
All right. Just a quick reference we may want to consider. Our current ordinance says that we have to make provisions for taking in our tables, chairs and umbrellas at nighttime so they don't blow away or don't blow into Main Street at nighttime, causing, you know, traffic hazards or concerns. How can we address this issue so that we don't have some of these tables ending up on Main Street on a windy, stormy night, a rainy night?
I, I would just encourage you to swing by. If, in a hurricane, they wouldn't move. They weigh about 120 pounds, these bases. And every time I have to move the umbrella, it gives me a hernia. I, but if you'd like, I would be happy to take the umbrellas in at night. The tables probably weigh about 60 pounds and there's just no way the wind would move them. But if you'd like, I'd be happy to move them onto the deck every night.
Well, my concern is not necessarily your tables, but if this is done community-wide, others may not be setting out 60-pound tables.
I'd like to add to what Jim said, the, in, you know, in 11 years, we've never had a table blow off the porch and end up on Main Street.
Yeah, I think we're cognizant of that ordinance and we certainly want to uphold our ordinances, but we'll keep an eye on things. And if we see one eatery has a problem with Skyward tables, we will, we will give them a call and handle them in a neighborly way.
Thank you.
I'm just asking that if they put out tables and chairs that they're substantial, rather than ones that could easily, you know, be blown away. That's all.
Pete, that's, that's definitely happened with Lena's and now Red House. And we've changed them so that they are now those 120-pound bags underneath. So yeah, we've, we've addressed that as well.
Yeah, those of you in the business community, if you can, you know, talk to your colleagues about it. If they're, if they consult you about tables, that'd be a good piece of advice.
No problem.
And I was just going to add, generally speaking, I think, you know, it's all sort of uncharted territory. We're trying something new. There likely will be a few bumps along the way. You know, I'm confident that everybody here is operating in good faith. So, you know, as long as there are no problems or if there are, they're just quickly, we're just going to keep moving forward with this. This is the ultimate get to yes in my mind.
I see Susan, Susan's hand.
Yep, go ahead.
She's on mute.
I think she's still muted. Hold on.
No, I just did it. I got it.
Okay, there we go.
Um, it would seem as an accessory to this that business, the businesses, the borough should be providing information about alternative parking areas. Because this could be really frustrating. People coming to town expecting to park where they usually park and not being able to. So it may be a more cooperative effort among all commercial parcels in the borough. You know, the shared parking with banks, you know, on off hours, shared parking in, with some of the properties that have a lot of parking spaces and not the need for quite so many. But I would hate to have all the goodwill and good feeling be damp, dampened by the frustration of not being able to find a parking space. So maybe we just need to get some more hands up of, I want to share my parking and communicate where parking that isn't typically known is.
Yeah, I think that's a good point. Well taken. And that's certainly one of the points that we will discuss monthly. How is our parking? Do we need to adjust anything? Because if people can't park to, to eat at our eateries, it's, we're not helping them very much. And then the, did we vote?
No, we didn't yet. So let's, let's do that. So council, I will call the question regarding the relaxation of these ordinance. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Are there any opposed? Any abstentions? Hearing none, passes seven to zero. All right.
And then on the second point about use of the alleyway, I would say that it sounds like we have some more ironing to do on this idea. So perhaps we could invite Yardley Borough, Yardley Business Association, as well as Experience Yardley and a few members of council to form an ad hoc committee and try to come up with something. I like the idea of people bringing blankets, but we still need someone to handle the trash. So I don't think it's something we necessarily are going to figure out tonight unless we want to be on the phone until Monday.
Caroline, I apologize. Is that the alleyway between Salon Nine and Firehouse Bikes?
Yes, Spa Main.
You, you definitely have to get Mike involved. Was it Brian? Brian, no. You, you definitely got to have Firehouse involved because they, they, he's probably one of the busiest, if not the busiest in Yardley, right in the, in the borough right now.
Yes, I think Paula, Manager Johnson was reaching out.
All right, good. Okay. Just, I, just pointing that out. I, I know I have two bikes in there that just, that I dropped off three weeks ago that are just finished yesterday. So I, you know, he's definitely somebody that's got to be notified of anything that's going on there.
Definitely, yep. I see Jim and Susan.
Oh, Jim, you're muted. Hold on. Can you unmute on your end?
Meanwhile, I just have a quickie. On the Wawa description, it says that they have no suitable areas. How about the little plaza up front?
And the, the one with the memorial statue, I'm not certain that that belongs to them.
Oh, I think it does.
I believe so.
Okay. I, I wasn't, I didn't have that knowledge. So sure, I, I think, I think people usually just grab and go at Wawa, but I can reach out to them if they think they need a space and suggest that.
If we're in the sharing mode, that would seem to be a good space.
That's great. Thanks.
Right now, Jim?
Yeah, I'd just like to reiterate, if I won't be on that committee, that's going to be looking at that space across from vault. But if you do need to solve for the trash problem, one of the solutions could be, we could all chip in and take different nights to empty the trash, something like that. But I would, you know, put my, I'm not going to empty, I probably will end up emptying the trash, but myself or someone from my team will go out there a few nights of the week and empty the trash out and throw it in our dumpster if that helps the, the cause there. Okay?
Jim, we could definitely talk about that.
Yep.
We could definitely.
I mean, in that spirit, if you guys want to get together and, you know, create a scenario where it's easy for us to make that happen, I think it, it's something really cool that Yardley could have this dining on main concept, whether it's on the sidewalk or in that alleyway. And it's something specially Yardley could be doing during a crazy time. It could actually be, you know, a, a, a rare bright spot in a crazy time. But if you guys could make it easy for us, that would be great.
We, we'll be able to sit down. There's, there's enough of us that want to get stuff moving. I'm sure Stu and the guys at Vince's and anybody else that's relatively close by. I don't think it's going to be an issue with getting out there and saying, okay, is this thing full or not? So we'll, we'll, we'll talk about it, Jim.
Yeah, it, it'd just be helpful. Maybe if the, the borough had a little bit of money, they could throw at it for a tent rental and some rentals of tables.
Yeah, or some sort, yeah, some sort of tables or something.
We could take care of it. Just maybe we could all pitch in and find, find a way to make it work.
All right.
I will send out an email with as many parties as I can think of. And if you are interested in joining the cause, you can, you just reply that you want to be involved and we can get those conversations going. And then the final piece of this is just that Wes mentioned, perhaps we were interested in waiving the borough's portion of the permit fees. So to give a little relief to eateries who need to put a tent up. So it's a 60-40 split. I'm sorry, I don't remember where the 40% goes, but it's out of our control. It's outside the borough. Paula, do you, do you know what the name of that entity is? So we're only 60%. So we're talking about maybe like $40 here. So this is just something for discussion if we're interested in doing that. I'm hesitant because things are tight for the borough too. But if council is, is into the idea, we can certainly entertain it.
Caroline, I'm sorry, how long does the permit run for? And, you know, is it a monthly, weekly for something like a tent or something like that?
I, Paula, do you know?
Paula or Wes?
It's a one-time thing.
This is one-time thing. It's a temporary tent and it's over once all this is over.
Okay. Okay.
Is that the only thing they would need a permit for, those who put up tents in this whole motion?
It depends. Some, some of them, such as the Yardley Inn are using electric, so they need electric as well. But the permit fees really aren't that bad. We do, we do need zoning to look at it as well. And that is it. So Yardley Inn picked up their permit today. They paid in full. I don't know if Michelle is still on, off the top of my head. I want to say it was between $200 and $300. It wasn't that much at all. So. But we still have to pair our professionals, the guy writing the permits out, approving them and going to doing inspections. That's where the 40% goes.
So does anyone want to make, David, I'm taking over. Anyone want to make a motion to waive that, waive that Yardley, the Yardley Borough portion of the permit fees until, until the end of the pandemic?
I'll make that motion.
I'll second it.
All right. So we have a motion from Mr. Ross, seconded by Mr. Barry to waive the borough portion of permit fees. You know, I'm guessing we should probably detail this a little more to say that it is limited to temporary permits applied for, for some relief from COVID restrictions.
And can we back apply it to those who had, had just applied?
Yeah, I agree with that. I'll, I'll amend my, my motion to include that. So the Yardley Inn can be reimbursed for whatever they paid already from our portion.
Second. All right. So amended. Lucky, I saw you unmute. Did you have a comment?
Yeah, I was just going to suggest you use the same ending date as with the other motions. That way you can adjust it at the same time again, if need be.
All right. That is a fair point. So that when we review and renew these provisions, we're doing everything at once. So Mr. Ross, Mr. Barry, are you friendly to one more amendment to put a temper, you know, to put an end date on this for the first council meeting in July where we would renew and extend?
Yeah, I'll amend my motion to reflect that date.
Okay. So do we have any further discussion questions, comments on that? All right. Hearing none, I will call the question. Oh, sorry, David Applebaum, I just saw you had your hand up.
To unmute, David.
Ah, is that what that button's for?
Yeah.
First of all, thank you for allowing me to speak, David Applebaum, 39 Brice. As the representative for Experience Yardley, I just want to say how excited I am to hear that our restaurants are going to start to open. And secondly, we, I don't know if you already had shared this with you, but we are, have begun some initiatives to support those restaurants. And if the restaurants online tonight have not responded already, we have started a program for a Yardley gift card, which is essentially a Visa card. And it can include any, any restaurant in Yardley Borough. There is no cost to the restaurants. The cost is paid by the person who purchases the gift dollar amount on the card and is given to a relative friend or whatever, and can be accepted at the restaurants, just like a Visa card. The reason why we did this is again, to support the restaurants. And now knowing your plans, which I am really in support of, I think that we can do a lot more as Experience Yardley. So I'm excited to join your head hot group, Caroline. And I'll bring, I'll, I'll let the others know as soon as I know when that meeting is going to take place. I think that I can speak for Experience Yardley and say that I'd like to volunteer some time to make this transition successful. Obviously, we're not going to benefit monetarily, but we benefit by being a group that not only brings, you know, entertainment to the borough, but these events that we produce tend to be geared to have economic impact. So in that vein, we would like to be involved and volunteer some time. Thank you.
Thank you, David. All right. Any additional questions, comments, concerns? Again, the motion on the table as regards to the permit fee waiver. All right. I don't. All right, I don't see any, let me just scroll over and make sure. All right, I will call a question. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? Any abstentions? Hearing none, the motion carries, seven to zero. All right, thank you.
Okay, the next discussion item is Quiet Streets Yardley, which I'm just going to briefly summarize. We don't really need to discuss it at length. Parks and Recreation suggested we look into closing down some of our borough-owned streets. So for walking, for pedestrians, while, while social distancing is in effect, because the canal has been very busy. We met internally with Chief Kelly and Wes and a few others, and we're uncomfortable closing our, down our main roadways because it would be a ton of work for our police force. And also, we think we'll be in green phase soon, so we don't know how needed this is. Traffic is picking up. So all that being said, we're going to kick this to the Community Outreach Committee to look into perhaps drawing some walking maps that Wes Forker had already started, and also closing down perhaps some of our less traveled streets within the neighborhoods for safe walking. So that one is still, still being developed unless anyone has any questions or comments at this time. Okay. I don't have the agenda in front of me, so I might be jumping around. Do we want to discuss? Oh.
I was going to say you just, under discussion, you still have the term note, and then the tot lot is under other business, so either one.
So we are, we did reach out to Newtown Bank, who extended our last line of credit for the sidewalk. And we had some preliminary discussions about a new line of credit, because interest is very low right now. So they did offer us a rate of 1.7% with very loose terms that we can kind of dictate a lot of what we want in terms of length and when we start payment. But I just wanted, because we received the quote for the bridge just today, and the sidewalk numbers have shifted a bit with learning that the HOP has expired, we are able to kick this discussion to the next meeting. The, the rate will still be good at that time, so if everyone is all right with waiting until the next meeting, I think we should do that.
I would agree with that.
So we'll make sure you have everything on hand to do your due diligence with all the quotes involved, and we can have a more fruitful discussion at the next meeting.
If you could also include when, when you, whatever information we're going to get between now and then, if we could also know the, the amounts that are available to us. I don't know if you've checked how much of a lot of credit they're willing to extend, that would be interesting to know also.
I thought it was up to $500,000, but I might be making that up, Paula, do you remember? Or did they say?
Yeah, Caroline, I don't think we discussed a specific number. You know, we were going to wait until council sort of fleshed it out a little bit before we went back to the bank, but we could, Paula and I could certainly follow up with the bank to see if there was some upper limit that they might have in mind. But, and I, I think it's probably up to the borough, quite frankly, to, to figure out, you know, what you might want to have as far as that upper limit goes.
Well, you, because you don't have to take it, so.
Right.
He's kind of like, you might as well get the maximum, I'm just curious what that is.
Yeah, so we can inquire a little bit more about that.
Do we have a limit, Lucky, of what we can?
Well, I mean, there are limits under the Pennsylvania Local Government, you know, Debt Act as to what can be borrowed. But, you know, the borough, the borough has very limited debt at this point. So I can figure those out precisely as well to make sure we don't, but I don't think.
We won't be making any motions to come anywhere near those ceilings, Ryan, I can assure you of that. We do have to make an initial draw of $50,000 to open the line of credit if we decide to go forward. So it has, the project has to be at least $50,000 of the money we borrow.
Right.
Anything else on that? Okay, so finally, we did receive a letter from the Bucks County Health Department Director that we can open playgrounds effective immediately. The full letter was attached in a separate email from Paula that was sent to all of you. Based on this letter, the following municipalities have opened their parks already. Shawfont, Ivyland, New Britain, Newtown, Percasie, Haycock, Nakamix and Soulberry. The following will open this week. Bristol, Hilltown, Newtown, Silverdale, Warrington, Tullytown, Humveeville, Warwick. And the, the following will remain closed until green phase. Lower Makefield and Upper Southampton Township. The health director does request at a minimum that a sign be placed if you do open. So as a rough draft, I drew up this sign for discussion. I am, I did visit a few of the parks this weekend, and there was minimal to no sign at many of them, but there wasn't excessive crowding. Separate family groups were respecting each other's space. So I, I am of the mind to make a motion to reopen the tot lot effective June 6th with added, added safety signage.
Second.
All right, that motion is made by Councilperson Thompson, seconded by Councilperson Ross to reopen the tot lot on June 6th. Do we have any questions, comments, concerns on that motion?
One question and one concern. The question is, have, have, has any resident or person expressed a desire to have the toilets open sooner rather than later? Like, are we?
Yes.
From them?
Yes, I am a member of a mom's group on Facebook, and there was a call from several Yardley Borough residents to reopen the tot lot on that page. I haven't received anything in an official capacity, though.
And my concern is that I would, probably my preference would be to wait till Lower Makefield does it, because they are the surrounding community, but that's my personal preference, so.
Yes, there certainly is some concern that be, being surrounded by a municipality that hasn't opened, we, we might get crowded, but I mean, the tot lot is so tiny. It's, I've never even pre-COVID seen more than two families there at once. So I think that what's happening in municipalities that haven't opened is people are cutting the signs down and the tape, and they're using them anyway. So perhaps instead of, you know, making our community members do that, we can try to provide guidelines and hope that they follow them in a safe manner. But again, that's just, just my opinion.
If I may, guys, I just, I have one other question. If, I don't know if you have a temperature on it. If you know me at all, I've been involved in just about every sport possible in Yardley. Do you have a temperature on what LMT is thinking about or Pensbury School District as far as opening up Macclesfield or anything like? I know it's kind of an aside, you don't have to talk about it now, if there's, you know.
Yeah.
Another outlet?
Yeah, we, we're in communication with the Parks and Rec Director from Lower Makefield Township, and they did provide extensive reasons for why they're not opening until green phase. Primarily, they're relying more on the CDC guidelines than they are from this letter from the Bucks Health Department Director. So I guess it just, it just depends what you want to wait more heavily. I think, I think with the Bucks Health Department Director, he found not a lot of cases of surface two-person spread, so that was the justification there.
Okay.
Great job on the sign, by the way.
Thank you.
All right, so before we continue, actually, I have a quick question. Motion was made for the sixth, but we go yellow on the fifth, do we want to change?
I said the fifth, I thought, yeah.
Oh, okay, well, let's call it the fifth then.
I can amend it, but I meant the fifth.
All right, so we have a motion on the table to reopen the tot lot on the fifth. Are there any further questions, comments, concerns?
Just one more question, since you, you mentioned it. So it is the consensus of, I guess, experts that surface trends, transfer of the virus is not really probable. And then also being outside makes it less probable, is that?
Yeah, there is evidence that UV rays do sanitize things. I do not have the peer-reviewed journal article in front of me that the Bucks Health Director relied on in that statement, but that statement was made, yes.
Right, yeah, and I, I've actually been watching a number of the commissioners' press conferences and town halls where Dr. Damsker is on those general, and, you know, he was quite clear that surface transmission is possible. But in many of the documented cases, that has not been the overwhelming way that people are getting infected. You know, so that is part of, this is at your own risk. Is it possible? Yes. Is it likely, given what the case numbers are like in Bucks County now and given that it's outside? Probably not. But, you know, in the spirit of full transparency, it could theoretically happen.
I would add that fast signs can't get this to us by Friday, so we'll be using a chalkboard with similar guidelines written on it until then, if this passes.
All right, before I call a question, one last call, questions, comments, concerns? All right, seeing none, I will call a question then. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Are there any opposed?
I'm going to say no.
All right, any abstentions? Motion carries, six to one. All right, and I do believe that concludes our regular business for this evening. You know, before we wrap, I know we covered a lot. If there are just, from either council or the public, any final questions or comments that you wanted to get in that we maybe we missed earlier?
I think, I think there was someone mentioned wanting, or Mr. Kane mentioned wanting to talk about the protest on Thursday.
Yeah, Jim, if you're there, if not, we're going to move on.
Thursday and Sunday, potentially.
Well, I heard Thursday, I didn't realize they were actually talking, oh, excuse me, I heard Sunday. I didn't hear Thursday for, for this area.
So we, actually, Chief, if maybe you just want to summarize what we know and what we're guessing.
Right, yes, sir. Late this afternoon, we, we found out that we do have a confirmed peaceful protest scheduled for Thursday. It will occur from along South Main Street, from Afton, heading south with social distancing along the sidewalk. Sunday, I have no information on other than some information being passed along without detail. So Sunday, I don't even have a time. But we will have extra patrols out, we will, Thursday, I don't have many reservations for, because the, they came, the organizers came to us and they're providing all information, and normally those do not pose a problem. Sunday, we're a little uncertain on, I'm going to try and get more information from any source I can. If anybody here in the meeting comes across anything you're willing to share, I'd appreciate that. But again, these are both peaceful protests, and the one on Thursday has a very short duration, which is nice. I believe it starts around 5:30, 5:35, and should end around 5:55. And as President Brea pointed out, one of the things in our favor to help it clear pretty quickly is there's a, another protest in an adjoining municipality that people may be anxious to get to. So that should be a in and out type of, if goes, if it goes as planned, in and out. But we will have multiple patrols on that day, and we will have extra patrols on Sunday also.
Chief Kelly, are you asking any of the businesses along Main Street to close down or anything like that? Any suggestions or?
Not based on the intelligence we have now, if that becomes necessary. Paul and I will be reaching out to you individually, if that becomes necessary. Right now, the Thursday one, I don't believe that's going to be necessary.
Cool, thank you.
All right, thank you. So unless there are any additional comments to be made, we can entertain a motion to adjourn.
Oh, what, one thing?
Before we do that, I see David waving his hand again. You got it just in.
I just wanted to take this opportunity as a parent of a graduate of, or a soon-to-be graduate of Pensbury, that I am very thankful and pleased about the signs that went up in town with their pictures. And I wanted to thank Paula and Sandy Brady, we really appreciate it, thank you, thank you.
Thank you. And I see Michelle raising her hand. You know, you have to unmute yourself.
Yeah, I'm mute.
Okay, just wanted to say thank you to Borough and Council for all you've done. We're so appreciative, and we just can't wait to get back to have some normalcy. So thank you for all you did, we really appreciate it.
Thank you, I think we join you in wanting that normalcy back.
Oh my gosh.
Sunday.
Hand up from John Bichalas. You'll have to unmute on your end.
I think I'm in. Can you hear me, David?
Yep, you're good now.
Okay, good, great, thank you. Hey, I just had a question out of curiosity. Is there anything that obligates a small town like Yardley to have or to permit a, a so-called protest? Any kind of a march like that? Personally, I don't see the need of it after all that's been done, but why do we need to have this happen twice in a couple of days?
Well, that one, I'm going to say is going to be the First Amendment.
Yeah.
You know, there's a constitutional right to speak and assemble. You know, essentially, the people are allowed to do this. So we're grateful that they informed us ahead of time, and that certainly helps in our preparations. But that is, that is the answer there.
Even in jurisdictions that have permit requirements for assembly, generally, and some rule in the solicitoral, generally, these organized First Amendment activities. So even if we did have a requirement where they needed to get a permit to assembly, to assemble, these, these First Amendment expressions are generally exempt and, and they go outside. That's from my experience.
Okay, thank you, man.
Thank you, Mr. Solicitor.
We got the stamp of approval there, we got it right, Chief. All right, anything further? Otherwise, we'll take that motion to adjourn.
Our motion.
All right.
Second.
Motion is made, seconded more than once, all in favor, say aye.
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 Aye. All right, that carries, thank you very much, everyone.
Good night.
Good night.
Thanks for letting me join up, this is great.
Have a good evening.
Good night.
Thank you.
Bye.
Good night, everyone.